Mr. Zawiski, if you would like to talk about the capital improvement projects.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone. If you recall, a few weeks ago, we did a presentation of the overall six-year capital program and some specific information about this year's programs. I've given you again the summary sheets, I believe that I handed out the last time. The vast bulk of these projects are capital maintenance, roofs and building maintenance, very important projects individually, not really large numbers, but critical to protecting the integrity of the buildings as well as boiler replacement for the water line school. We expect to use a very high-energy efficient gas boiler to replace the original boilers in that building, believe it or not. The two projects that are a bit more interesting, first let me touch on the largest project, Farmington River Stream Bank stabilization at somewhat over a million dollars. It's important to note that that project was being paid for out of the reuse funds. It actually is not being bonded. It's also a very important project and it protects a section of the Farmington River Stream Bank that supports our southern sub-sour. It serves the whole southern and southwest part of Simsbury, the whole town of Avon. That costs open share with the town of Avon. As well as protecting private property in that area, it's a very important capital project. The other project is the Century area Charette project. And that would look to implement our first phase of work, which involves primarily extending the streetscape, planting trees, lighting sidewalks, brick veneers, as well as widening Station Street to two-way, which was recommended in the Charette. And also finishing up continually with some missing sidewalk sections in the whole three-block area of all way to the Bronx Station. We would coordinate that with very carefully with some improvements that the Water Push Control Authority is looking to do, as well as being conscious of private development activities that might be occurring in the center and that we don't want to put improvements in and then have someone who needs them for a private building. So there'll be a lot of coordination. And we'd also be coordinating that with Eno Memorial Hall, if the Board of Selectmen determine to put a senior community center in that facility. Which brings us to what I think is one of the most interesting projects on our list, which in fact is the senior community center. And I will, I'll run through very quickly the options in that program. That's the second handout I gave you, which was the senior community center study recommendations from the public buildings committee. Very briefly, a pretty detailed study was conducted in terms of potential users, demographics, program needs, space needs, in conjunction with the senior center staff. A lot of senior citizens have spent a lot of time studying the issues. They also spent a lot of time visiting some other facilities. What we're looking for in this first year is design development money, to in fact, to what's called 60% design. And we refine the program, refine the space, and do the building design. It takes just short of the designs and specifications necessary for bidding. I'm gonna go, I know you have a hearing, so I know you don't want to take a lot of time away from that, but I'll just quickly go through the boards that we did prepare. Basically, the public buildings committee's charge was to look at Eno Memorial for the senior community center, as well as looking at some other sites. And in fact, they did look at several sites in town and looked at about six of them in detail. The background information and the detailed information from that study is available in my office, if anyone would like a copy, as well as on the website, I believe on your social services, senior center. The report is on the website. At the Eno Building, which has been the historic traditional center for many, many decades for community activities and senior activities in more than sixty decades, the infrastructure's all in place. It's, it meets one of the center, central criteria of this study, which was to locate a building in the center of Simsbury or reuse an existing building. And it was interesting in the polls we conducted, while there was a lot of diversity of thought amongst a few sites, if you aggregate all of the opinions about sites in the center, the center always won out. What we're looking at, I will say as a caution, that the charge of this study was to look at demographics, look at space requirements, look at program requirements projected out over the next twenty to thirty years. Our architect did go pretty far in doing schematic plans for us, so I do want to emphasize the word schematic, because they're not to be detailed or something, they're not to be that sort of thing. One of the key features of the Eno Building is to address the parking and drop-off issues. So the parking deck is proposed, and I emphasize deck, it's not a subterranean garage, it's not a parking garage. You would have access from Arrow Street at the lower level and have access at Station Street, basically where the parking lot is right now. But it does provide a lot of very interesting opportunities and that the entry to the various levels in Eno is difficult right now. This would provide a straight entry in the lower level and a straight entry into the main level. It would provide an atrium entry area on the Station Street side with a drop-off tied into the two-way configuration that I mentioned in the Charette study, and put two additions in the back, as well as an outdoor patio seating activity area to the south. The extreme lower level would be dedicated to the mechanical equipment, which is already there. An SCTV would go into a black box type studio, which they desire, they really don't need those windows in their studio. And then their office area, they would have direct access from that lower parking deck. And there'd be stairways and elevators to get up to the main floors. The next floor up would have access from Station Street. You have again, an atrium type setup, glass wall, you would keep your existing wall internal so you could see through that, see the brick walls as it exists. Some of the key features of this program, it would preserve all of your public areas, your rotunda, and really restore some of the really elegant portions, you know, to their original intended use. The center area would have, return all of that space to dining, which was the original intent, a new kitchen, bathroom facilities and activity room, and then all the administrative offices. And then the center area with public space, a little cafe, which is a big feature in virtually all the senior centers that the study committee visited. They did visit facilities in Lebanon, Connecticut, Glastonbury, Connecticut, Penfield and Agawam, and decided to use Agawam as kind of their baseline facility. This is the auditorium level, again with this entry area, we're now having good connectivity to the front, nice open access to the elevators, open access to the back, again with another group of bathrooms, the elevator and stairs, fitness room, active live activity room. The DAR room is preserved as is. The blue room where the seniors are now would be restored to kind of its former elegance with a fireplace, one big open room taking all the offices out of there. And preserving all the auditorium, all the rotunda, all the very impressive public historically significant space. The upper level would basically be unchanged. It would have the north conference room, the south conference room, which would be available for a range of activities. It would get that exercise room out of there, and then you have your upper balcony and the back area getting changed. This is a view from Station Street. It's the existing portion of the building with the tower. The addition in the back, the open deck, that's very important, I think, for a lot of people to realize, that's an open deck, it would be completely open to Railroad Street. And then your glass walls and your entry on the north side. I think this building has a lot going for it, and it's in the center, there's a lot of synergy with activities of the library, shops and stores and churches. One of the things, if you visited senior centers, you would expect to see a computer use room, a computer training room, a library of some sort. Those are not in here because the library's across the street. One of the other big pluses with this parking deck is, is that it obviously addresses the need for more parking, but a lot more conveniently opens up the Iron Horse Boulevard lot park. Right now, if you park at Iron Horse Boulevard, you've got pretty steep slopes to get in that building. Now you'd be able to put it on a grade level and using elevators and stairways to get to all the other levels in the Eno building. The committee did look at, as I mentioned, about twelve sites in town, looked at about six of them in some detail. And again, one of the underlying criteria there was not to take private taxpaying property off the tax rolls. There were some discussions about looking at other private buildings. And one of the real guidance features was not to take private buildings off the tax rolls. The committee decided to take a look at the corner of Bushy Hill Road, Stratton Brook Road. This is Powder Forest Homes, building skate northwards up. This would sit on the top of the hill with drainage coming east, it would not go over the hill with drainage going to the aquifer. But it is very close to the aquifer area, and it obviously involves a lot of land clearing. Utilities are generally close five, but the sewer would have to draw in. So one-floor building with all parking on grade. The architect really went quite a bit beyond what he was retained for. And I want to caution, this stuff is all schematic, he was not retained to do a building. So I don't want anybody to love it or hate it, because there's a lot more to be done. Again, a schematic floor plan was laid out to accommodate those space requirements, which are about 22,500 square feet of net square feet. You know, we have to put on a lot less than that because we're using the existing space. But again, the key features, the multipurpose room, dining room. But again, since we're now far away from the library, we'd have a little mini library, and I don't want to imply that's a library, it's just a reading room, but it would have that computer training and use areas, your exercise rooms, that central entry area of a little cafe, public seating, and your office suite areas. Plenty of bathrooms at the extreme locations, so you don't have to walk too far once you're in the building. And again, this, again, caution, this is strictly a rendering, you know, it's not a design, but that's kind of what that building would look like. So they're kind of two real extremes, and one's not in the center, one's a completely new building, one's a real adaptive reuse. The cost figures, interestingly enough, are all pretty close, excluding the parking deck, Eno is the most cost-effective solution. We expect to do more formal presentations to the boards, to the Board of Selectmen, have another public, formal public informational meeting with the goal to get a decision on one of these sites in July. A third site that was considered is adding on to the back of the Performing Arts Center. Senior citizen professionals and our architect thought that that was very interesting because it's a real multi-generational site, got children in the playgrounds, on fields, the dog park. And I saw quite a bit going for that. It also addresses the Performing Arts Center need for some more space, so we could have shared space, which is kind of exciting. But one of the things that my staff has noted down there is that it is a very busy site, which is good. But I really wonder if all the shared times of use can be worked out. There's also some fairly complex permitting issues down there and utilities while nearby that'll have to be brought in the site. The reason we're asking for that design development money, because if you look at your summary sheet, estimated costs for all these alternatives are quite similar. My target, talking with the building committee, is to get the total project cost, and I emphasize that's total project cost, not building cost, which is less. The total project cost in around $6 million. So those design development monies would provide refined to the program needs, the space needs, professional cost estimate, and it was some good plans to go forward with. And we would be looking for funding to actually build this facility in another year and a half month. But it was plenty of time to go through the process. But I did want to mention that the design development money is available through the plans on the selected site. Just coincidentally, all the costs are quite the same, so that number is pretty much right. Okay, thank you all. The main purpose for tonight, and this is always the pain in the part, because this is the part our bond council does. And we have to read the wording for these projects into the record. And I had Hiram should have sent you that sheet. And basically, you have to read in the paragraphs for our clerk to record, I'll be replying.
I'm not sure we have that.
I don't think it has it. Is this one you just gave?
No, no, the wording.
No, I don't have it.
Okay, I'll do this. But basically, we'll start with that resolved paragraph and read it in, and then we're gonna record it. So the first one on the agenda is the Farmington River Stream Bank stabilization.
We don't have that language, Rich, so if I can...
I didn't get it.
If I can borrow your copy, I'll read it into the record.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know about your procedures here tonight, but we've not had an opportunity to talk about this at a public hearing. I wonder if a couple of us could make some comments about one or two of these projects?
Um, Hiram?
The Board of Finance public hearing, which was scheduled for approximately ten days ago, was not properly noticed. The information for that was not on the website. And then after the, after I read in the paper that we missed the public hearing, I looked on the website for more information, it still was not posted there, and I had to come in and talk to the chair to get the information online. So, and the public, the continued public hearing to cover that mistake is tomorrow night. So this makes it a little bit awkward for public...
For both of us.
Yes, for everybody.
And this is one of the peculiar parts, as you remember, with bond council, they love this language to be able, the Board of Selectmen has to do a piece of language, the Board of Finance has to do a set of words, and you all have to do a set of words. So it doesn't have a lot of bearing on the final outcome, but...
But if there's a project that's not there and you're not reading the language for it, it has a big bearing.
That is true.
Okay, I'm trying to follow that logic. We only have, the projects that, all of these projects have already come before the planning commission, and we have endorsed them as eight-dash-twenty-fours, which then went to the Board of Selectmen, correct, Hiram?
Well, this is the formal. The presentation I did to you first was for detailed information on each project, and this is the very formal eight-twenty-four. So this does not actually approve the projects, it's just an eight-twenty-four referral process.
Well, if you give me five minutes, I'd show you my logic.
I would like to have this done within five minutes, so if you can shorten that up, I'd really appreciate it, Anita. We've got a public hearing and all those folks are here for that now.
Yes, I understand, but I was surprised when you changed the agenda. I applied to tell. I'll give you my written comments, and I'll synopsize them just verbally. Basically, I'm here to talk about the parking deck. She passed us down. The, I'm here on behalf of the Simsbury, let me go over here.
If you would, thank you, Anita.
If you turn to the third page, you'll see a page that's familiar to you with Farmington Town. This was uploaded from the town website just yesterday. This is about the parking deck. And it has, in the year 2014, the sum of the $1.25 million in it. This is, was our understanding in the Main Street partnership, that this was the condition of the capital improvement program until, I'm not sure exactly what moment, but the moment just before, the moment when the Board of Selectmen approved the list, and it suddenly fell off the list. And we've been working with, very diligently, through a public involvement process of the Charette that many of you here took part in two years ago, that was a big planning commission initiative. The parking audit, which you have in front of you tonight, again, I believe, which was done by the EPA for this commission. Then, working with the Board of Selectmen's office to go through the CIP process in which you wait for your turn until the projects come up. And then we applied for a Main Street Investment Fund grant from the state of Connecticut for half a million dollars, which would reduce that 1.85 million by a half a million. And we were ready for this, and the reason that we're upset with it now at this point is that the only time anybody talks about a parking deck is in conjunction with the senior center. But that is not, I emphasize not, why Main Street zeroed in on this project. It was, it is completely justifiable through business needs, through parking needs, through downtown circulation needs, through the Park Once policy that is talked about in the parking audit. And we have a lot of information from the businesses that ring the Eno area and their crying need for solutions to their parking issues. We don't want to be put off because somebody wants to wait a couple of years until they make up their minds about the senior center. That's basically the synopsis of what I wanted to say tonight. I just had one other comment on the last paragraph on the second page, that if they haven't made up their minds yet about where they want to be the senior center, it's, I would urge you to be cautious about approving planning funds for a pick and a pull, basically. Thank you for giving your five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have to wait for Rich to get back, because he took the resolution.
Well, maybe give him some chance to put his mind question.
Oh, it showed back up. Okay. And the project detail, which Anita gave us a copy of, is very similar to what Rich handed us. It's within a couple of dollars.
I've got it, Rich. Yeah, it was in the pack.
It was in the pack.
Oh, you don't have it.
Nope. I had it. I lied. I apologize. Bad mic.
Rich, do I have one of those?
If I gave mine a mic, I'll take mine. Your tape is wider than my tape.
It's oversized, that's why. Okay. Hiram, with the process, we can just read this in, we don't need a motion or anything until we read in what the various resolutions are?
Correct.
Okay.
It shows here, it shows here, motion is seconded on the resolution here. Just looking at item one.
Okay, actually...
Still looking at motion in the second.
So could I have a motion for item one, to approve item one?
So moved.
Have a motion, second, thank you. I'll read this into the record. Resolved that the planning commission of the town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant, pursuant to section eight dash twenty-four of the general statutes of Connecticut. Stabilization of the Farmington River Stream Bank to protect existing interceptor sewer, contemplating to include clearing, the stream bank grading, placing filter, stone and fabric, large stone armoring, and environmental remediation, including survey, engineering, equipment, and permits related to the project. We have a motion, we have a second discussion on this? Anybody? Any discussion? All in favor of approving this?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item one is approved. Can I have a motion to approve item two?
So moved.
Bob?
Second.
Thank you, Gary. I'll read this one. Resolved that the planning commission of the town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant to section eight dash twenty-four of the general statutes of Connecticut. Emergency generator improvements contemplated to include Terriffill School emergency shelter use study, possible generator switch and recircuiting, recircuit, building and ground service center, thirty KW generator and switch, high school shelter recircuit to serve kitchen, library recircuit to serve boilers for mobile hookup, Eno Memorial Hall recircuit to serve boilers for mobile hookup, EOC dispatch center backup generator switch and recircuit, including design, engineering, acquisition, installation, and equipment. Any discussion on that point, that resolution? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of approving that?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion's approved. Item two is approved. How many of these resolutions are there, Rich? Like, eight? Got myself into it.
They get shorter.
Yeah, right. Okay, item three. Can I have a motion to approve this?
I'm moved.
Ferg?
Second.
Second, thank you. Resolved that the planning commission of the town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant to section eight dash twenty-four of the general statutes of Connecticut. Town offices HVAC carpeting, main meeting room updates, contemplated to include first-floor carpet replacement, energy efficiency improvements to the HVAC system, and refurbishing of the meeting room, including replacement of carpeting, desk, chair, drapes, wall cover, coverings, layout improvements, and audio slash visual equipment, including design, acquisition, installation, and equipment. Any discussion on that item? Any discussion? All in favor of approving that?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes. Item three is passed. Item four, can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thanks, Gary. Item four. Resolved that the planning commission of the town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant to section eight dash twenty-four of the general statutes of Connecticut. Town teledata infrastructure improvements contemplated to include a fiber cable connection among the town offices, Eno Memorial Hall, and the water pollution control facility, along with related splice points and related equipment, including design, engineering, site work, construction, installation, and equipment. Discussion on item four. Discussion on item four, hearing none, all in favor of approving item four?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Item four is passed. Item five, can I have a motion to approve item five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
"Resolved that the Planning Commission of the Town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant to Section 8-24 of the General Statutes of Connecticut. Eno memorial roof repairs contemplated to include the repointing of four chimneys and improvements to the roofs over the Blue Room, the DAR area and two flat roofs over each stairwell entry and replacement of missing slate roofing tiles, including design, engineering, construction and equipment." Discussion on item five? Discussion on item five? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item five is approved. Almost there. Item six. Can I have a motion to approve this?
I move.
Ferg, second?
Second.
Thank you, Gary. "Resolved that the Planning Commission of the Town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant to Section 8-24 of the General Statutes of Connecticut. Designed for a senior/community center based on the selected recommendations of the senior/community center study. Design may include renovations, additions and/or new construction at the location selected by the Board of Selectmen. Work may include architectural and engineering services, testing and related professional services." Any discussion on item six? Discussion on item six? Hearing none? All in favor of approving item six?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item six is passed. Item seven, can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. "Resolved that the Planning Commission of the Town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant to Section 8-24 of the General Statutes of Connecticut. Installation of the Department of Public Works truck wash, including design, engineering, site work, construction and equipment." Any discussion on item seven? Discussion on item seven? All in favor of approving item seven?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item eight. Can I have a motion to approve item eight?
So moved.
Better motion is second, I think.
Yeah, I was saying.
Item eight. "Resolved that the Planning Commission of the Town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant to Section 8-24 of the General Statutes of Connecticut. Roof replacement at the town offices, including the flat roofs over the Board of Education offices, the vault and the catwalk, including design, engineering, construction and equipment." Any discussion on item eight? Discussion on item eight? All in favor of approving item eight?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item eight is passed. Almost there, two more. Item nine. Could I have a motion to approve item nine?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
"Resolved that the Planning Commission of the Town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant to Section 8-24 of the General Statutes of Connecticut. Replacement of the 1968 boilers at Squadron Line School with more energy-efficient gas system, improved drainage and ventilation systems, including design, engineering, site work, construction, installation and equipment." Discussion on item nine? Discussion on item nine? All in favor of approving item nine?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item nine is passed. And last but not least, item 10. Motion to approve item 10?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. "Resolved that the Planning Commission of the Town of Simsbury approves the following project pursuant to Section 8-24 of the General Statutes of Connecticut. Infrastructure improvements to the town center area as defined in the charrette study contemplated to include sidewalk, landscaping, lighting, drainage, sewers and underground utilities improvement, including design, engineering, site work, construction, installation and equipment." Discussion on item 10? Discussion on item 10? Hearing none? All in favor of approving item 10?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item 10 is approved. God bless.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. I need a drink. Okay, we are circling back. Ira, please help me to make sure that we run our public hearing appropriately. My understanding is that we will invite the applicant up here to do their presentation and then open it up for comments. Comments will come through the chair to the applicant. This is a room for civil disagreement if we need to head down that road. Am I correct?
Yes, as the commission may remember, the hearing was opened after your last meeting, but it may be continued to provide the applicant time there for questions that may come up. In the interim, the record should also note that several commissioners took a field walk in the meantime, and perhaps you want to talk about who did that field walk and who didn't at that time, whatever it's going to be for you. And then, the order of events that you pointed out is correct. The applicant will make a presentation and public comments after that.
Okay. What I would like to do is check with the commission members first to see who was able to make a sidewalk to the site. Ferg did, I know I did, Bob. Neither of you were, okay. What I would like to ask the two of you two is to be able to set up a time to do a sidewalk so that we can have lots of people involved here. I would appreciate that, thank you. Having set that up, if you'd like to go forward, sir? And could everyone that gets up to speak, please identify themselves and who they represent? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Quirk, professional engineer with Kratzler Jones and Associates. I'm here this evening with Ed Perrignan from Creative Land Subdividers and Paul Meehan, the applicant representing Team Meehan. The proposal this evening is for a re-subdivision for a five residential lot off of Hildecrest Drive in the R40 zone. Presently, the site is a 6.2 acre parcel at 40th and Hildecrest Drive, as depicted here on the board showing the area off of Hildecrest Drive. The site consists of a principal residence located in this area here. This would be Hildecrest Drive in this location. And the site is outlined in red, the property lines in red. The site consists of a principal residence with accessory garage, barn and outbuildings. The rear of the parcel is a mix of soft and hardwood forest. There are no wetlands on site, as submitted by soil scientist Henry Moller indicating that the soils are a lagering and no wetlands on site. The terrain is the local watershed crest with non-steep slopes as defined in the regulations. The area is in the R40 zone. Presently, the home is served by public sewer from Hildecrest, town drainage and private wells. The proposal before you this evening is for a five lot re-subdivision of the present parcel with a 450 foot, linear foot town road. The proposal is for the town road to be 24 feet wide, in accordance with the town regulations, with a town standard cul-de-sac. Each lot shall be greater than 40,000 square feet, as required by the regulations, with all the required front, side and rear yards depicted. The homes are to be served by private wells and an extension of the public sewer from Hildecrest Drive through the subdivision. Each lot meets the regulations. Specifically, though, on lot number five, the buildable area, per your regulations, is for 10,000 square feet of buildable area. We're requesting a 4.5 foot waiver of the 80 foot dimension. This has been reviewed in the, with the town staff and is incorporated in the town staff letter from the plan that you've received. This is just an inherent characteristic of the width of the property in that we can meet all the other components of the buildable area. In fact, we could fit 11,500 square foot buildable area, but it's simply that the minimum dimension does not meet. This has been done on other subdivisions. The existing parcel width, the parcels to the south and the road right of way, the parcel, existing parcel is 4.5 feet shy for that buildable area. Additional lot area has been provided for lot five, that lot is 45,000 square feet. Open space is being provided by means of a homeowners association with a perimeter, a 30 foot perimeter buffer depicted here in the dark green. And this is appropriate for the area to provide screening and buffering to the existing adjacent homes. This 30 foot conservation easement will be held by the homeowners association. This, along with open space areas along Hildecrest, will provide 22.5% of the total parcel to be conserved. The, this method of conservation was selected in order to conform with the zoning regulations, provide for streetscape improvements, including subdivision signage along Hildecrest and maintenance of the streetscape that exists today, as well as to maintain the sanitary sewer easement outside of any private lot that rather commonly held by this open space. The conservation easement, again, maintains an important buffer along the perimeter and screen from existing residences. We've provided a detailed progressive stormwater management plan. It's been reviewed by the town engineer. I believe you have in your package his review of that in supporting or agreeing that the peak discharge rates are maintained for the pre-development condition. We've developed this plan in order to maintain or reduce the peak discharge rates for each of the stormwater discharge directions. Excuse me. Again, the parcel lies at a crest, a localized crest of the watershed. There are four there are four watershed directions, basically the cardinal directions of north on Hildecrest, east towards Lawton, south towards Laurel and west towards Hildecrest. We meet or reduce the peak discharge rates in each of the four directions. This is accomplished by a series of low-impact developments in combination with an onsite underground detention system. Each of the homes will have a required rain garden system to collect the roof water runoff that'll be collected in the spring garden system to promote groundwater infiltration. There's a high-level overflow system from those rain gardens to the town drainage system so that in the larger storm event, that'll be collected and controlled through the storm drainage system. The proposed roadway, which constitutes the majority of the impervious area, has a two-stage underground detention pipe system. It'll be a 30-inch pipe that retains and holds that water and is released at a slower rate than the present rates into the Hildecrest Storm Drainage System. Again, this has been reviewed with the town engineer. We also included calculations through the 100-year storm event to indicate through that large event that there's adequate capacity in Hildecrest Drive, as well as achieving this reduction in peak discharge rates. So in summary, the application meets the subdivision regulations. We request the waiver of the dimension of the buildable square. We've met extensively with town staff and we have worked with them very closely to try and develop a subdivision that's in harmony with the area. We've also met with the neighbors and worked on their concerns. If it's appropriate at this time, I also like to submit, we have seven letters signed by neighbors that are in support of the application. I'd like to submit those for the record as well. And we have to work with the neighbors to do some.
If you could give them to our secretary, thank you.
Excuse me. So at this time, I'd be happy to either entertain questions or continue with the public hearing as soon as possible.
I think we'll continue with the public hearing. Unless somebody had specific questions at this point. We've already put off the public and I'd like to give them a chance.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there some individuals from the public who'd like to come forward? I'll ask you to identify yourselves, please.
Hi, I'm Heather Golden and I am the next door neighbor of 50 Hildecrest Drive. And a few of the questions of the last thing that was brought up of the concern in our neighborhood is being in harmony. Almost all of the deeds that we could find in the records indicate that all the houses on Hildecrest Drive are one and a half story. This deed does not indicate that, because this was the original builder of Hildecrest. So we feel that, or I feel, that a two-story colonial is not fitting in with harmony. In addition, the front, it is my understanding that it is going to be a huge rock wall of Murphy's Turn, which I feel is going to separate Hildecrest from the haves and the have-nots. If we could tone that rock wall down, if this is approved, that would probably be greatly appreciated. I feel that I'm going to be a little green shack before you get to the monstrosity subdivision right around the corner. In addition, I understand that there's a 30-foot buffer. On my side, on our side on the 50 Hildecrest, we do not have a lot of trees. So there is a concern that I am going to be looking right into the neighborhood to the right where so we sit a little bit below. So we do have the concern of somehow being able to see our neighbors. We are, I am concerned about the drainage issues. I understand that the drainage is going to be met once the division, the subdivision is developed. My concern is, are we planning on coming in and cutting down all five acres to begin with? And if we only sell two lots, are the other three going to sit there? Or are we cutting them one lot at a time? I mean, there are a lot of trees there. We are concerned with the drainage of, these trees pull a lot of water up until the subdivision's built. What about that drainage? So those are our concerns with the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Richard Loveland, I live at 1 Hildecrest Drive. I've spoke to a lot of the neighbors and as far as the harmonious, I agree with Heather. We've kind of gone back and forth quite a bit. I'm surprised that there's letters from neighbors who are for this, because we have spoke to most of the neighbors. There is a significant amount of people here that are concerned about the development. Also, traffic. I live at the beginning of the street. We're going to add probably 10 cars to the neighborhood. It's not a significant thing, but we do have driveways that are close to Bushido Road. And in the morning now, it's difficult to get in and out of those driveways. We have a number of neighbors that I have talked to. A lot of people have turned to me because of my construction experience. I am a PE also, so they have turned to me, they have come to me with questions. I understand all the calculations that Kratzler and Jones has presented and their basis of design. I would like to request possibly a third-party review just so that we can verify that the numbers are good and that they've fallen under all the current criteria. A lot of the neighbors currently are having issues with water. There are numerous houses where, that people complain right now to mow the lawn because the water runoff, the way it runs off on the street, as is. If this is to go through, is there a possibility of improving the drainage for the neighborhood? Right now, all we're doing is dumping everything back into the existing system, which in my minds is somewhat inadequate at the time, at this time. So there are a lot of little things that we've gone back and forth. As Heather mentioned, Heather and I spent a significant amount of time here at Town Hall reviewing documentation for deeds. When I bought on Hildecrest Drive almost 14 years ago, it was explained to me that there was a charter for the neighborhood. It was a non-written agreement of how homes were going to be built and that it was listed in all the deeds. Fortunately, I'm one of the homes that does not have any of this information in my deed, although I did a large addition on my house seven years ago. And we fell within the criteria, because a lot of the neighbors said to us, hey, when this neighborhood was built, this is how the Hildre, or Hildertesh and Eric Tesh wanted the neighborhood to feel. It was an intent, it was one of the first planned developments in Simsbury. And there was going to be a feel to it. If you go and you drive around the neighborhood now, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood. We kind of talked after the last town meeting that we're not going to put in McMansions, but they're going to be, you know, these 3,500 square foot colonials, two stories on the front. The deed restrictions, as you work your way around the neighborhood, it's probably 70% of the deeds. percent of the deeds has a listing in there, that you can't have a house over one and a half stories. So it limits you to a Dutch colonial, a Cape, a ranch, contemporary, which are reasonable homes. My concern with this project is that it's gonna change the feeling of the neighborhood. I agree with Heather that as you put up a stone wall, and you delineate and separate yourself from this nice, small community feel, and you build these homes, it has drawn a line in the sand, and it has created an environment where maybe my house is less desirable, because, oh, you live on the street and there's those big houses up the road. I'm less concerned with those things, and I'm more concerned with the water. And we just want to keep the feel of our neighborhood. Now, also, I had heard, I heard something tonight that I hadn't heard before, that there's a waiver to modify, away from the current zoning, to change the size of one of the homes. It's the first I've heard of it. I didn't, I didn't know that. I would've done a little more research into it if I had time. But it just, it seems like we're, you know, we're trying to cram as much as we can into this six-acre lot. It's not as big as people want to make it sound. And if we throw these big homes up, the developer has discussed this home down on Wildwood, that's this beautiful home that he built, and in my opinion, it's this monster shack that got built behind another home. And if I was the people living on Wildwood, I wouldn't want that in my backyard. So it's just, there's a lot, seems to be a lot of things that are going on, where certain people's opinions are that they're, they're making these wonderful improvements to the community, and most of the neighbors that I've talked to have, you know, have opposite opinions against this, and that all we're doing is, we're bringing down the neighborhood by building these monster shacks at the end of the street. So.
Thank you.
My name is Trish Wickin. I live at ten Laurel Drive. I'm here tonight to share my concerns, so you can consider this my letter, not in support of this project. My property, my backyard abuts the property that we're speaking about tonight. And I do have concerns with the plan to build five, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar homes on this Hildecrest property. I hope that the planning board will consider the significant changes that this construction will have on our quality of life and the enjoyment that we have in our properties. I'm gonna list some of my concerns. First, the loss of privacy is a major concern to my husband, my children, as well as our neighbors on Laurel Drive. With one home planned in the view of our backyard, instead of looking at what is now a wooded lot, we will see the backyard and the back facade of a rather large home. Further disturbing to us is that because our property sits at a lower elevation than the proposed homes, as many do on our street and on Hildecrest, as previously mentioned, these families will also look out of their beautiful homes into our backyards and the privacy that we so enjoy right now. We chose to purchase a home in Simsbury ten years ago for that very reason, for the privacy, for the yard. We wanted to give our children that same neighborhood feel that both my husband and I enjoyed when we grew up. We could've stayed in West Hartford if we wanted to be looking into the breakfast milk of our next-door neighbor. Second, I'm very concerned with the potential drainage issues. It's been mentioned that, by other speakers, that will present with this project. Currently, the plan calls for the removal of nearly six acres of trees. Like Heather, my property in this thirty-foot buffer has virtually no trees on it. So all of the surrounding trees in that area, we anticipate, will be removed. These trees absorb a substantial amount of water, and our concern is where will that water flow now? We do take on water in the heavy rains that we have, and what isn't absorbed into our backyard runs down our driveway into our neighbor across the street, who has to sandbag his driveway in order to not have that spill off into his property. That's currently, now you take out six acres of trees, and we'd like to know where that water is going to go. My house, along with several others on Laurel Drive, as well as the Hildecrest and Lawton homes, we sit at lower elevations. Without proper insufficient drainage, that water will be in our yards and subsequently in our basements. When the builder showed up at my house and spoke to my husband, he suggested that we purchase a sump pump, and it wouldn't be an issue. But my basement currently does not take on water, and I don't think I should have to go out and purchase a sump pump, sump pump, in anticipation of this project coming on. Third, we have a lot of unanswered questions about how this project is going to unfold. Are you gonna clear the land first, then sell the lots? Are you gonna clear the land, build the homes, then try and sell them? Will it be done in phases all at once? What if the lots don't sell? What if the homes don't sell? What happens to the cleared land if, excuse me, that aren't sold, and subsequently homes not built? Will there be a lawn grown there, which we know the lawn would absorb some of the water, the dirt not so much? Or will it be left as just this big dirt lot with no tree covers? It also, to go back to the harmony comment, it doesn't seem appropriate to put this style of home in this particular area. If you look at the landscape and the homes that surround this proposed cul-de-sac, they are all ranches, they're all capes, they are the Dutch colonials, generally around that one and a half story limit that we have. Wouldn't a collection of Dutch colonials be more aesthetically pleasing and appropriate, and fit into harmony with the neighborhoods that surround that particular street? Lastly, and probably less significant to most of you, because you don't live there, there's a tremendous amount of wildlife that comes through our backyard, in this wooded area in the properties that all abut one another. We're concerned with removing of these trees, and that will force the deer, the turkey, the fox, the raccoons, and of course, our friendly black bears further into our living spaces, and certainly where many of our children now currently play. So there's a concern of ours that they don't have the cover of trees to safely pass through all of our neighborhoods. Lastly, if this is an inevitable project, I sincerely hope you'll consider our concerns seriously, and ensure that the plans include the proper drainage and the privacy that we wish to maintain, as well as the assurance that future problems with regard to the drainage will be handled by the builders and the planners, and not left to the financial responsibility of current homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at fifty-six, fifty-eight Hildecrest Drive, and anything like this is going to be disturbing to me, because I have a strong biology background, and I'm an environmentalist. And it just hurts me to see more and more and more of this development taking place. And when I received a notice about this, I had to read it five or six times before I could believe it. And it just seems, there are what amounts almost to two houses, two perfectly good houses on this property, and a woodshed, that are gonna have to be destroyed, and that seems just so extreme and wasteful to me, to access six acres of land that weren't meant to be accessed in the first place. And I agree that it is going to bring more traffic and less privacy onto, into this community. And there are going to be great big trucks of all kinds, earth-moving equipment, moving up and down the road for months, or a year, or who knows. However long it, they say it's going to take, it will probably take longer, because it always does. I was thinking, or planning to sell my house next year, and I have the kind of house that families are going to want, and they may have small children. And if there are great big trucks moving up and down the road, all day, every day, I don't think they're going to want to buy my house, at least until this is all finished. And that is going to make it difficult for me to sell my house. And also, the idea of, why would they want my house if they can go a few feet down the road and buy a newer and a better one? So this is probably going to make it more difficult for me to sell my house.
Could you just say your name to the record? Would you just say your name to the record?
My name is Claudia. We'll go with you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Allison Dreaming. I live at seventy-one Hildecrest Drive. Unlike the rest of us who have come up and represented ourselves, I am for the project, and I'll tell you why. If you owned six acres, okay, and you have a house, and you're getting ready to retire, and you cannot get the money for your house that you paid for it, I think any one of us is a builder approached and wanted to pay us that difference, and we thought about our retirement, that we would say yes to this project. Now, in regards to harmony, I'm in agreement that there should be harmony with Hildecrest and this big street. That's not what I'm saying. All I'm saying is, understand the people that are selling at this point. I've spoken to other people on Hildecrest as well, and they've all agreed that your house is an investment. And when you move forward, you're hopeful that you're gonna get that money to help you. You don't want to sell for less. None of us do. But this is the scenario, and that's why my heart goes out to them that they, you know, they're doing this in their best interest to support their families, so.
My name is Marilyn Savick, and I'm here with my husband Joel, and we are the owners of the property on thirty-six Hildecrest Drive. Ours is a very unique piece of property. Most of it's wooded, and is completely surrounded by eleven residential properties. Those are eleven abutting neighbors. Almost twelve years ago, when we first moved into our home, the wooded acreage had been unattended for many, many years. To say that it was a tangled mess would be an understatement. The woods were filled with vines with poison ivy, fallen trees, and yard refuse from abutting neighbors. At the time, I think we counted fifteen decaying Christmas trees that we removed from the property. As of yesterday, sixteen. Our family, and especially my husband Joel, spent countless hours looking to restore this piece of property. For the past several years, again, through Joel's constant diligence, we have had a beautiful wooded lot. It would put most preserves to shame. The past few storms have caused several of our trees to fall. In addition, trees from neighboring yards have fallen onto our woods. These trees are not cleared, since people assume woods are woods. At this time, we are no longer able, and we are no longer willing, to continue to maintain this huge lot. By virtue of its location, this piece of property can be enjoyed by no one, except the owners of forty-six Hildecrest. And without proper maintenance, it could even become a fire hazard to the homes that surround it. Mr. Edward Farigno has proposed a beautiful subdivision set on a cul-de-sac. I don't know exactly what a developer typically goes through to ensure that his proposal is accepted, but from my perspective, he has literally bent over backwards to try to work with each and every abutting neighbor, and create a neighborhood that will enhance Hildecrest and the properties on it. It is inevitable that this piece of property will be developed. Another builder could opt to purchase a house on Laurel or Lawton and put in a through street. Joel and I didn't feel this was appropriate for the neighborhood. In order to improve this particular piece of land, it makes most sense to subdivide the acreage utilizing the recommended plans. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I live at thirty-six Hildecrest Lane Drive. I agree with what was said earlier. It is an investment, okay? I don't disagree with that. I agree with that one hundred percent, okay? But I'm not buying a lot of this. I'm not buying this story that this is a lot, and it's gonna drain off four equal ways. I mean, that's a miracle. That would mean it's a perfect pyramid. I don't think so, okay? Tell me the water's going somewhere? There's water problems all over this neighborhood. To pretend there isn't is bull, okay? There's water issue and drainage issues everywhere. Where my house is, two houses down, two-hundred-and-seventy-five yards without a sewer, and the water runs into my front yard, okay? No one from the town has addressed this. Straight down, you can look from where that driveway is, on the lot, straight down, there's not a sewer drain for two-hundred-and-seventy-five yards. If you go up the driveway the other way, there's one about every fifty to seventy-five yards, all the way through on both sides of the street, okay? I don't think it's been looked at, okay? I don't buy this story. I don't buy equal drainage. I don't buy this is all going through the ground, okay? And I'd be the first one to tell you, it is an investment, okay? But I don't think it can ruin everybody else's investment for one other person, okay? I think this needs to be looked at, long and hard. But I don't think anyone has stood at the top of the street and watched the water flow during a rainstorm and addressed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Bruno. I live at sixty-four Hildecrest. I'm in a bit of a unique situation, where all of the storm drains from along this side of Hildecrest will come down to my front yard. The way that the storm drains are set up at this point now, they come down, and anything that's on the street runoff will all catch in the catch basin right in front of my house. Recently, they had come, the town had come through and redone the curving, as per a couple of years of plowing, destroying them, would turn, turn my front yard kind of into a washout. My concern is, depending on how you guys have defined the water flow-off rate, there is only a fifteen-inch pipe that drains that runoff from the storm drain, which empties out about two-thirds of the way through my property, and will end up going across, going across what she held to the pond that goes across the way. Would like you guys to come out and maybe take a look at that, and see if that's gonna support. I mean, we've been talking about the building lots and all of this sort of stuff, but I catch it on the bottom. And so if you can see how is that gonna get managed down on my end, I, I think that's a concern that's worth looking into, because we do have all of the runoff from all of the storm drains that do line along the way, but they do all end up in the catch basin right in front of my house. And so the concern that was raised about what's gonna happen in the interim as this project is being performed, with clearcutting, or however it's, however it's gonna be developed, are we gonna, are we gonna have a lot of runoff with my water, and how is that gonna be managed? You know, if, if that, if that isn't managed well, that can potentially end up, you know, causing a water park in my front yard. I'm just a little bit concerned with, I mean, we do have a sump pump, we do have an internal leaping system. It manages when the, when the water gets bad, but if, if this starts to become more of a flow rate issue, then I'm starting to get a little bit more concerned. So those are kind of my requests, if you guys can come take a look at that, and see what the, what the flow off is, if a fifteen-inch pipe can manage that sort of water. I just don't know, you know, what sort of, what sort of piping is gonna be coming into that. And then with this central storm drain catch, you know, as, as the, as the houses are draining off to a dry well, and then draining off into this main center catch basin, give me some understanding of how many days of how many inches of rain is gonna fill this thing up, and then what's the flow rate off of there, you know? Because if you're getting less, less or equal amount, I, I wanna see, see that, and see the numbers, if we can take a look at that. If the engineering plan's, you know, Rich and I can take a look at it, and just kind of see what the flow off rate is, because that's, it's just a concern that this is gonna turn into something that's gonna be a little bit more problematic than it sounds like.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Jim, we're at forty-nine Hildecrest Drive, right across from the entrance of this property. And I agree with the, I guess, the stormwater drain-off concerns. And so one is just, I think you said you were gonna have And so, um, one is just, uh, I think you said you were gonna have drainage from the roofs into this, um, I don't know, leach field or something like that.
Rain gutter.
Rain gutter, okay, thanks. And, um, just wondering on that, um, the maintenance of that, who maintains it, the clean out of that, and actually the numbers, you know, what were put together on how that drainage or, um, the fill rate of that, um, that system will, um, take place. So I think someone mentioned maybe a second, um, view of that or an engineering view of that would be helpful. My other concern is, um, is really groundwater. We all have drinking water wells in the area. Um, I'm, I think probably could be down gradient, I'm not really sure. I'm right here from the piece of property. So you have six new we- five new wells there. So what impact will that be on my water system? We have pretty good, I have a couple water analysis, it's pretty good. And now you're gonna bring in, um, I don't know, they're gonna probably have lawn sprinklers, more wells, more bathrooms, more, um, use there. And so what impact will that be on my well system and, uh, what we're covering also water quality? Um, also, when you talked about this drain here, I think there's a couple lenses. I know on my property, it's pretty clay. Might be a lens of sand, I'm not sure on their property, but my just, my property does not drain very well at all. So just the drainage rate from that, um, that, uh, system, uh, again, should be looked at, I think, a little closer to see, make sure that it can maintain at a, uh, high level.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Barbara Lee, eleven Laurel Drive. I'm here basically representing some of the elderly people who couldn't make it, who, whose backyards will abut this new prop- this new plan. And, um, I have lived on Laurel Drive my whole life, my family and I. And it, I know it sounds like a sentimental thing more than anything else, but this is horrific for these, these people, especially on that side of the road because they, the reason we moved to Sinthbury was to have the woods and the lots and the big lots and not, not be looking in, in your neighbor's yards or have them looking in your windows or whatever. And we, we are like a family. I mean, and it's, it's really heart wrenching. I know if my father were alive, even though we're on the other side of the street, he would be not, not happy, but, um, and I also am concerned, we do have, um, in front of my house, uh, water. I, I actually didn't real- think of it till tonight, but I fell on a patch of ice that had frozen from the water drain, drainage that comes to the end of my driveway now and broke six ribs, but that's beside the point. But just so you know about the water situation, I'm sure this is not gonna help it. And everything that Trish said, I absolutely ditto. And, um, you know, I do think it needs to be certainly looked into a lot further. I see very few people writing and that concerns me because I'm hoping that, I know you, that, you know, everybody's concerns are heard. So, thank you.
Anyone else have something to say? Hiram, I believe it's appropriate to give the applicant a chance to address some of the issues that have been raised? Okay. And, uh, Hiram, my, my intention is that this should not become a, a debate.
No, no, it's their response to the questions that were raised.
To the questions, okay. Thank you.
Again, for the record, Andy, we've worked with Cracher Jones and Associates. Um, I think we've heard a lot of very insightful comments. I did try and take notes on every one that came up and I tried to categorize those the best I could for our rebuttal. First, um, to try and address the issue of, of harmony in the area, um, we understand that the other properties do have deed restrictions and this one does not. I guess I'd ask the commission to take a look at this in terms of the regulations that you have before you and if that is an issue outside the scope of the subdivision regulations. Um, it's not to say that these new homes would not be, there could be one and a half story homes, there could be two-story homes. Um, a lot of that will be obviously dictated by the economy, by the individuals that buy the homes. But there's also nothing on these plans that says that couldn't happen. There's nothing in the plans that we presented that says they couldn't be one and a half story homes or that they will be two-story homes. It's simply that the home sites that are proposed for your regulations have adequate services, address the regulations, um, and that it, you know, would meet the regulations in that regard. Uh, but we did take some extensive look at that. We did confirm that our property does not have the same deed restrictions as was presented, but it's, it quite honestly, just simply in my opinion, outside the scope of the subdivision The drainage, um, I, I really can't emphasize enough that we had extensive, extensive review with your town engineer and with our calculations and looking at this over months and months literally. We met preliminarily with concept plans, we worked very closely with the town engineer. He obviously has a wealth of experience and knows the town and has the town at, uh, interests at hand. We provided calculations that meet the town regulations and he insisted that we go beyond that and we did. Um, we've included calculations through the hundred-year storm event, that's beyond the standard regulations. And there's a lot of detail to the design, just some of that I'd like to touch on. There are presently four subwatersheds, not necessarily equal, but there are four subwatersheds. And, um, what we did is we analyzed each of those subwatersheds, uh, for its own individual discharge. Being at the crest of the hill, it's not a situation that the runoff is going in in one direction, it actually goes in, in four directions. And we achieved that decrease in peak discharge rate through the hundred-year storm event for each of those directions. Specifically, for example, this direction here, um, there's a quadrant here where presently this discharges onto a neighbor's lot. Again, through a combination of taking all the roof leader runoff, I'll just use this house as an example, there's a rain garden. Essentially what that is, is just a landscape depression within the yard. And that's been designed in accordance with, we, the UConn has specific guidance and then we have the DDP, DEEP regulations, that that'll store one inch of runoff from that, excuse me, for that roof area. But one inch of runoff, um, event equates to essentially ninety percent of the storms that you'd see in one year. It has been designed through the hundred-year storm, but I wanna emphasize that it's designed to simply hold one inch of storage for that impervious area, which would be ninety percent of the vents of the storm events in a year would simply be held in this landscaped area. So it actually does subtract it, if you will, from the runoff that you will see being dispersed to the off-site, uh, areas. That is a low-impact development design. Um, it works very well for promoting groundwater infiltration, restoring that water back. And we've gone further to design a high-level overflow where the overflow from that will go into the storm drainage system. So an area here that would have normally seen a house runoff without any control, um, is now gonna have a rain garden system to collect ninety percent of the storms. The overflow from that is gonna go into an underground storm drainage system. Um, so we've really looked at this in a lot of detail and that's the case for, for each of the homes on the site. We've done extensive onsite soil testing, which is included in your maps. We did two series of soil testings. We did one a series and this is, normally we wouldn't do soil testing given that there's, there's public sewer available. And we did that to verify the soils on site. We did a, a series of, of shallower tests with percolation rates and we also did a series of deep tests to verify that there'd be no blasting on the site. Um, and all that is, is on the plans. Um, there is a perched, uh, system of, of, uh, not as permeable soils in the top layer with more gravelly material below and that is indicative of, uh, the neighbors finding this in the area and we have, especially probably this time of year, that perched water in these upper layers, that there is more of a gravelly system below. I mean, we've taken that into account. The storm drainage system from the road is not a perforated system because that would not be appropriate for this, for this particular site. So all of that is not gonna reintroduce and exacerbate any groundwater situation for the site. Um, the site does require a DEEP registration and that will be filed. Um, if this application is approved, we would, we would file that. So it will be registered with the state and there are criteria that the state has as well as, as the town has for erosion controls, um, both during and after construction. And this plan meets that in terms of the erosion control measures that are indicated on the plans. We did spend a lot of time reviewing the site both, uh, during the snow when, when storm drainage was blocked, um, as well as throughout the spring. Uh, myself personally, I know the town engineer inspected the pipes that were out there. So I, I really just can't emphasize enough that we spent a lot of time, a lot of detail and fed to work very closely and the town engineers had excellent input and I think from the letter that he has, um, I think he really has provided an independent review and, um, I think the intent or the, uh, the nature of his letter is that he finds these, uh, plans and reports meet the town regulations. Um, there were also number comments about, uh, the earthwork and the clearing. Uh, again, just some numbers, it's a six-point-two acre site. One-point-four acres will be preserved through the perimeter conservation easements as well as the open space. In addition, uh, so, so we're, we're not talking about six acres of clearing, I wanted to clarify that. We worked very closely on the earthwork, um, and design for the grading for the site to make it a balanced site. Um, so the intent is that the material that's excavated along the front of the site will be used for fill on the back of the site to meet the town's standard road design as well as whenever appropriate, we try to design a balanced site and eliminate the haul from the site. So this is designed as a, as a balanced site. Excuse me. The intent is, um, there's any, the existing drive in house here is that construction activity could use that drive and begin the earthwork from the middle of the site, excavating from the front and placing it in the rear. So that that way, there will only be exposure of any earthwork in the last stage is once the rest of the site is stabilized. And the front portion would be protected with, uh, construction entrance, silk fence and any dewatering devices necessary during that last stage of the excavation. But in, in, uh, doing the construction in this manner, first of all, we limit the amount of activity at any given time and also we're controlling this haul from any excavation at the front to the back. There is no, uh, proposed large stone wall. Um, the only stone wall mentioned would be a, a small decorative one just to indicate the name of the street and the subdivision. Um, but it's not for any, um, gray retaining purposes, it would just be a decorative, um, type feature. Again, with the DEEP, DEEP registration, um, there are guidelines for that as far as seating as well as the town has with the bonding requirements. Then if any area is left disturbed, uh, then would be seeded if it's disturbed for an extended period of time. Uh, we have all the erosion controls, um, that are indicated on the overall site plan as well as the individual plot plans with erosion control of each lot. That was sort of the overview of the three main criteria that I saw in terms of, um, having a plan that's in harmony in terms of residential development, the drainage and the earthwork. We did also, um, receive comments, um, from, uh, WPCA. Uh, they were all technical in nature and those would be, um, we would comply with all of those comments. We also received the Farmington Valley Health District review, again, a favorable review, um, technical in nature in terms of the relocation of one of the wells, we, we comply with that. Uh, the fire marshal again in terms of, through some memo in terms of the roadway width and that the twenty-four foot roadway width is a good compromise between reduced impervious areas with a smaller roadway width, twenty-two feet and the fire marshal's request for twenty-six. The twenty-four foot proposed width is, is in compliance with the regulations. Uh, we meet the highway construction standards. I think those were all the, uh, review letters that were submitted. This time I'd be happy to take any questions from the commission, um, trying to address those or anything that you'd like to hear from, from the applicant.
Commission members, any questions, thoughts?
I do. Um, can you address how you're gonna mitigate the water runoff on, at the end of the cul-de-sac between the two houses? There's a large area there. Looks like it might have a good steep incline to it.
Yes, I can. Um, we've extended the storm drainage system all the way to the far end of the cul-de-sac. Um, there's a roadway high point at this location. So any of the, um, roadway area as well as the abutting system will be collected by that last catch basin. And then for the, the grass and lawn areas here, um, coming up to these two homes, we've situated the rain gardens in a location here, but they will also intercept the slope runoff from that area. Um, it is a gentle slope. I believe it's, uh, I believe it's six to one or eight to one in that area. Um, so we have extended that at a, um, at a gentle slope for that yard area. But the combination of intercepting all the roadway drainage before it comes into that area as well as positioning the rain gardens in a location that they not only take the roof runoff as well as some of the slope runoff and the ten-way flows has been accounted for us.
No. You, you talk about the rain garden. It's basic, basically a depression in the ground.
Correct.
So is there gonna be some kind of requirement for either homeowners association or the homeowners to maintain that?
Yes.
And will those requirements be in the deed so that it's?
That's correct. They'll be in deeds as well as, uh, it's part of the, the subdivision notation that's on there reported.
Has the applicant looked at any of this newer technology? Like see your work with the, the rain garden, but also the permeable paving, which may address some of the issues, um, knowing how hilly that area is and, uh, in years past, how icy it can get up there? That may, uh, I'm, was personally very skeptical of how well it worked, but I was very impressed how well it worked, um, at a couple of sites in town.
Um, for, obviously for the town road, that's, uh, that, that would not be an option, but that's something that can presented.
We'd let you if you wanted.
To the, uh, to the homeowners as an option.
You, you talked about LID design or down on the homes. Isn't permeable paving for driveways and stuff part of that low-impact design?
It is, it is. Um, but with, uh, low-impact development, obviously we wanna look at the site appropriateness.
Right.
And given, um, the upper layers of the soil here are not necessarily the proposed permeable soils that are appropriate for some of that type of feature, uh, it would work well for the rain gardens in terms of the plant life that's there and the intake of, of the, uh, the runoff from the roof water, which would be clean water. But some of the other things such as roadside swales, the grades are not really appropriate for roadside swales. Well, we did consider that, but the grades are not really appropriate. Also highly erodible soils like this, any of the open drainage systems are, are, um, not really preferred in terms of the low, uh, low-impact development for such a site.
Okay, so basically there'd be slopes so, so they would feed into the rain garden areas and?
The roof, the, the roof water will have the roof leader collection system that'll direct it to the, directly to the rain garden system. And then there's a high-level overflow pipe from that system, so it's piped from there down to the town.
Understood. Uh, driveways and is, guess what I'm really talking about here? Driveways and?
All the driveways direct, direct to the road system.
Direct to the road system. All right, thank you.
You, you talked about the buffer on the, on roads between Laurel Drive, but it looks like it's fairly clear already. So are there trees between that and Laurel?
Well, um, on, on this area here, I, I mean, I would really take, the neighbors would know best. I know there are some open areas down in this area here and, um, the applicant had discussed about supplementing in areas where, um, where there are open areas. Most of the trees on the site are, are fairly mature and they've got an upper canopy, some of them lack the lower canopy and that could be, we would supplement that.
And did I understand correctly, in the thirty-foot conservation easement or proposed easement, um, you were not gonna be touching any of the trees in there?
No, that's correct.
Although many of them are mature.
That's correct.
And it can't be leveled?
That's correct. All the clearing limits are outside of the easement and, and in some cases even further. We've indicated here to leave a buffer between these home sites, um, between the home sites and the existing tree buffer between them. So it's the, the easement area or, or further away from the easement.
Have you discovered that the, um, existing storm drain system for Hildecrest?
Have you discovered that the existing storm drain system per Hildecrest is inadequate?
No.
Because of the fact that it dumps out onto a wetland area at the base of the road?
There were several steps we went through with the town engineer, and that's an excellent question because the town engineer made us do a specific study that's included in the package of the capacity analysis of the pipe from this connection point on Hildecrest down. And we showed that through, that there is adequate capacity in that pipe. The upper system here is actually an eight-inch pipe. And we, there's adequate capacity because of the amount of detention we're doing on-site. We don't exceed the eight-inch storm pipe capacity.
I'm not so concerned with that as far as the system's exiting point. Exiting point goes in between two pieces of property at the lower end.
That's correct.
And it creates a drainage problem through that whole area. So the system, from my point of view, is inadequate. Because it does create a flooding problem for all the properties down below there, and you're only exacerbating the system there.
Well, we did look at the original Hildecrest plans and they do have a storm drainage system shown from the section here down to the bottom portion of the loop. And there's an outlet there towards what was termed a recreation area in the original plans.
Correct.
So that pipe and discharge has always been part of the...
The existing system.
That's correct.
But that existing system is inadequate. Because it does create problems for all the down, I'll call it downstream properties. Not necessarily on Hildecrest because they've even, they've remedied the problem slightly by actually creating a stream bed. That stream bed is uncontrolled as it moves farther on down the line as well. I know that's not really your issue, you're just the grass drainage, it's slightly with the amount of runoff that you're gonna be adding to the system.
Well, we've reduced the peak discharge rates through the hundred year storm plans. So if anything, we'll be reducing those peak discharge rates. Also, as an overall stormwater management plan, when they do town studies or look at an overall watershed area, the upper areas, where the upper portion of this watershed, that's where you'd want to have the most amount of detention and we're specifically doing that. So we are, by detaining in the upper portions of the watershed, we are, we're, it's the appropriate area to do that detention as opposed to a lower system because you have a further benefit for all the downstream.
So you're suggesting you're controlling the water flow from what it is now being a surface runoff to a controlled surface runoff, which you're actually slowing the process, is what you're saying?
Well, two-fold, one is that we're also, any of the surface runoff that presently comes to Hildecrest uncontrolled will be through a controlled system, so that's one benefit. The other benefit is we looked at the peak discharge rates, the rate at which the water comes off the property in each of the directions. And we're also improving that by reducing the peak discharge rates in each of the directions. So it is an analysis in terms of quantitatively, we're reducing the peak discharge rates. And qualitatively, that rather than having sheet flow that creates icing problems along the edges of Hildecrest here at that crest, this will all be underground, so it's an improvement in the nature of the flow as well.
I don't want to beat a horse to death here, I just, you said in your opening remarks, we will maintain or reduce. In view of what you guys are just discussing, does that mean that as the property now stands, when your development is completely done, there will be less runoff then than there is now?
That's correct.
In layman's terms, so...
That's correct.
Alright.
That's correct.
Okay. Secondly, I'm not an engineer and I trust Ritz Whiskey with my right hand. The impact of adding five wells, is there any way to judge, is that something you've looked into?
Because we have one there now.
Okay, you have one. Is that a concern or is that something that, having had restaurants in upstate New York with no sewer and no water and drilling too many wells to get too little water, I just, obviously, that's a concern. Is there a way to assess that or has some, an engineer looked at that and evaluated it?
No, we've started preliminaries, worked with the well company to look at that. And I think for sure that's...
Grelle, Grelle well drilling?
Do you want to, do you want to address?
I consulted Larry Grelle, who drills all my wells. Because the neighbor Jim, who lives across from where the road enters, I met with him and he raves about his water and he has a concern about four new wells depleting his well. No, I met with Larry Grelle, he drills a lot of wells in the area there. That area of Simsbury, that aquifer, it's a great aquifer, there's no danger. I wouldn't have, I did this due diligence before I had a contract. I don't want to build houses for people and, you know, have shortage of water, there's plenty of water. And the purity is good, too.
A third thing, I just, right now, you know, I'm gonna walk the site, there's, I mean, because it's all open and there's nothing there, there's really no privacy with the existing houses around it because the trees are mature. And obviously, you people and the owners of the existing properties have the right to plant trees. And that would help absorb water as well.
Correct.
I have no problem to add white pines for the conservation. Maybe a couple hundred saplings. Definitely son and I would probably install ourselves, but I would be willing to do that. I think it would make the neighbors happy.
Thank you. I have one more thing. Can you address the buildable square on lot five? Because I think there was a slight misconception from what I heard being said earlier. So the people understand what a buildable square is.
I'll try and address that. This is, first, I'd like, this is something I believe that the commission has acted on similar subdivisions. On Neelis Way, Erika Lane, it's not the first of its kind. The buildable square requirements, there's two components to it. Per the zone, the buildable, well, buildable area, or should we call it square, is, must be 10,000 square feet. And the minimum dimension on any one side of that area is to be 80 feet. Specifically for lot five, this area here, which is a 45,000 square foot lot, so it's larger than the standard lot. We could fit a buildable square of 11,500 square feet or more. So we, the issue, we were able to satisfy the first component of the buildable area in terms of the minimum size, a minimum area component. The, given the nature of the width of the present parcel, the dimension of the buildable area on one side would be 75 and a half, excuse me, 75.5 feet. So it's 4.5 feet short of the 80-foot requirement. So the waiver requested is for that four-and-a-half-foot waiver of the minimum dimension. And we looked at many different layouts. We felt this was the most appropriate so that it would be the request of a waiver only on one lot rather than on the Laurel Drive side, which would impact two lots. We also put additional area on that lot so that it would offset any concerns of the reduction in the dimension of the buildable square. Also, there would be no change in the setbacks, the rear setback, the front setback. So as far as any change in the proximity of the structure to any abutting properties or properties within the subdivision, there's no change there. It's simply that this lot is four-and-a-half feet narrower or not as deep. But we've compensated for that by making it a larger lot and putting any additional area within the subdivision on that lot.
We have a question.
I'm sorry.
One of the questions I had was on the setback, actually. There's a minimum frontage for the homes in Simsbury also. And my understanding was that that frontage was at the curb cut. And looking at the plans, that frontage is actually, they're taking it at the setback. Is that standard procedure to go to the setback or should those be at the frontage?
Hyrum, can you?
At the curb cut.
Hyrum, can you answer that?
It does allow, in the case of, for example, on the cul-de-sac, it does, the requirement is at the front yard setback. Is that the front yard setback?
So what is the frontage requirement in Simsbury?
It's 200, 200 feet.
And so you have 200 feet, 30 feet back into the property?
No, that's frontage. I had, the front yard setback in this particular zone, that is 50 feet back.
50 feet back?
Correct.
So 50 feet into the property, you have 200 feet of frontage?
Correct. It's, I believe it's maybe term the lot width requirement.
That's, that's right, that meets the regulations, the current regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Commission members? I'm sorry.
Yeah, when this started, somebody handed in seven letters from neighbors saying they were in favor of the project. Could you read the neighbors' names and addresses into the record so we know who those people are also?
I've never been asked that before, Hyrum, is that appropriate for us to do?
Everyone that spoke against it said their name and address, so I'm just curious.
I understand, I'm just checking procedurally.
On behalf of the...
Yeah, yeah, you handed them in, if you could just read the names and addresses.
First letter is from Pat and Joan Duffy, 35 Hildecrest Drive. Stuart Schiffman, 42 Wildwood Road. Krista Menzel, 20 Laurel Drive. Skip Ferris, 19 Hildecrest Drive. Sean and Peg Dealey, 348 Bushy Hill Road, indicated as the rear of the house is on Hildecrest. Mary Nielsen, 72 Hildecrest Drive. Daniel and Amanda Alessandrine, 71 Hildecrest.
Great, thank you very much.
In response, you had originally stated, or when you spoke again, that there were no plans for a two-story house. And according to my conversation...
Could you come up, I'm a little hard of hearing, I'm old.
In response, you had said that there were no plans for these houses at this point in time. However, I was clearly told, especially from 42 Wildwood Road, that those were the houses that were being built. Clearly, if you want to see the six houses being built, go to 42 Wildwood Road. Clearly, they're three-story colonial.
That's correct.
Okay, so that contradicts about what the homeowners want. Second, I have recently cut down some large white pines, so please do not plant more white pines in my buffer because I already had to worry about the erosion that's been falling on my own house, so...
How about some spruce?
Whatever is short and fills in, this is the way that it's going to go. A couple of questions that I don't think were... Well, he kind of answered the wells, you know, well, I guess, are there going to be underground watering systems? I mean, are they gonna have underground sprinklers?
Again, at this point, you don't know, I mean, that wouldn't be part of the subdivision.
Okay, so it's not something that you would install up front?
No, and I, if somebody wanted one, I could sell the house, I would put it. You know, if they wanted it, I would do it. We do have big 250-gallon tanks for the sprinklers so that we don't tax the wells. So we have like a...
Right, okay, I just want, you know, because there's a lot of water and...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I think that was all that I had at this point.
Thank you.
I'll try, I could, I'll try and just clarify, I guess, my first point. Not to be confusing, it's not that we're not planning to build two-story houses. I guess my point was that this plan and everything that's on the record doesn't indicate that there are two-story houses. Someone could come forward and say they want a one-and-a-half-story house. I just want to be clear that it's not, I'm not making a contradictory statement. I'm just saying that it's outside of the subdivision plans. That that's not something that's required to be shown on the plans. It's not something that the plans here limit us from doing a one-story, one-and-a-half, or two-story. But rather, I guess I was asking the commission to look at the regulations that you have and review the plan in terms of the regulations and that that is something, from my understanding, beyond the scope of subdivision regulations.
Thank you. Commission members, any other questions about...
I hate to keep beating up the drainage, but I'm looking at the town engineer's report for storm, drainage requirements here. Let's see here, the lots one, two, and five are directed to a 30-inch diameter stormwater storage system. Where's that gonna be located?
The storm drainage system again for the road. The pipe system in the road from Hildecrest all the way to the end, this is that 30-inch...
So that's the 30-inch...
It's basically underground detention pond.
Detention pond, okay.
That's the same detention system, that's correct.
I understand, when you described that. It says outflow from the storage system controlled by smaller outlets, which reduce the rates of runoff to pre-development conditions. So you're not adding any more to it, but you're not necessarily improving it either. You're getting it to pre-development condition, so it should technically stay the same.
There are storm events that there is a reduction.
Yes.
There are storm events that there is a reduction. I think, not to speak for the town engineer, but in summary, it's to pre-development conditions.
Gotcha.
There are smaller storm events that there is a reduction.
Okay, and then the runoff from three and four, which is the back on the cul-de-sac side, it looks like, that's where the rain gardens are gonna be?
There's rain gardens on...
Rain gardens are everywhere, so yeah, this is not as clear as I thought. Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Once again, with the soil conditions, did you find that the soil conditions in this area were different from the rest of the cul-de-sac area?
No, they were fairly uniform throughout the site.
And through your reports, it says they're well-drained?
The lower, the town engineer, I think, described it pretty well, that the lower courses, as classified... I'll refer you to...
Well, the Henry Mueller report here suggests the findings, all soils on a property after they're tested and examined are well-drained.
There's several criteria. The soil scientist was reviewing the soils on site to see if they qualify as wetland soils. And they do not, they're considered, it's considered a well-drained soil. If it's a non-wetland soil, that classification that he's using is indicating that they're not a, they're not a wetland soil.
So well-drained means not a wetland soil?
From the standpoint of the soil scientist, a non-wetland soil would be a wetland soil. So he's using the term well-drained to indicate that they're an upland soil.
Do you have...
That's Henry Mueller report.
I understand, do you have soil profiles on...
They're on the plans. And also, I'd like to refer you to, I believe it's the, well, the second page or the first text page from the town engineer, the Hartford County Soil Survey. This is from the town engineer's report, indicated that the soil on site is a broad brook stony silt loam. Upland soil with compact glacial till.
Right, there's the problem.
There's the upper sections, there is that compact glacial till.
Which is nothing, now, you're not, when you're doing your cuts, you'll be going below that?
Correct.
So that glacial till is within the first 15 feet?
Oh, no. Check the, I think it was about 24 inches. I had to try to check the plans, it's on the plans, but it's the whole...
I'd like to see the soil profile if we can.
On the plan sheets... That you have as part of your package.
I mean, everyone in that area has terrible drainage on the property.
On the surface.
I'm very aware of the property.
Yeah, a lot of...
Everybody has water problems.
And we looked very extensively at that. We looked at the system here with the rain gardens and overflow systems. And the detention system of the road is all designed to address that.
I'm not suggesting that you don't, you know, you're not making the best out of the bad situation already exists there. As long as your systems are not exacerbating or adding to the problem and they're actually alleviating some of the problem because it's capturing a lot of the runoff that would naturally come off of that property. I don't have a problem with that, it's just that the information that we're being given here is kind of misleading. When I, when I hear that we have well-drained soils and I know by experience that the soils in this area are terrible as far as drainage is concerned, it's... And I'm wondering if this site, because of all this pine and the fact that it's on the outer edge of this glacial trail, there's some kind of a difference in soil profiles?
No, they, again, were pretty uniform throughout the site. I guess, I really think the soil survey description that the town engineer has included is inaccurate. And the tests that he performed on site reflect those findings as well. I guess I just wanted to caution... I, I guess I just wanted to caution you, the soil scientist calling them well-drained is just simply that it's an upland soil, it's sort of-
All it's doing is differentiating it from a wetland soil.
In that case, it is misleading, but his charge was to determine if they were wetland soils or non-wetland soils.
Another question, is that top twenty-four inches keeping the water from going down into the gravel where it's good actually?
Yeah, that's probably the red clay sitting on top.
Yeah, right, well, I got the same problem with mine.
Do you find that, Mark?
There's no soil profile on it.
Yeah, I don't-
All the homes are composed with gravity pudding drains, that's one thing that's been a lot of time during the wealth. The new homes here will not rely on some pumps, rather, they've been designed at specific elevations to have pudding drains that drain to the town drainage system or the rain gardens by gravity, so that we're not relying on some pumps.
So they're gonna be going either into the storm drains or into the rain drains?
Correct. They designed them specifically not to rely on some pumps. Also, the roadway, it's not shown on the plan, but something that's done at the time of construction. But I expect that the town engineer will require underdrains for the road at the time of construction. That's typically done at, at that stage of destruction during inspections, so that'll have a benefit.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask another question?
Uh, as soon as I get done with mine, you'll be next. One of the people mentioned the size of the stone wall out in front, and you had referred that it was gonna be much smaller than that. How, how big is big, how small is small?
I, I would say it would certainly be less than three feet tall, it would be just something-
Not more than three feet, yeah.
Three feet by, what kind of length? I'm not looking to pin you down, I'm just looking for an idea, point of reference.
Forty, forty, forty feet maximum, that would be the maximum. It's just intended at the entrance with, uh, any native stone that's there to be used.
Okay.
But it's not gonna be an engineered wall, so it would certainly be less than four feet in the tent, that would be-
Smaller something to fit in, okay.
Just similar, actually, to some of the stone walls that are on the property, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Will it be lit, like?
No.
Sir?
Well, going back and forth about the, the water, they keep talking about how they've done this extensive analysis and the harmonious with the community and all this, but they haven't stopped and they haven't talked to some of the people that are affected by this. There are properties that pond right now, because the way the road is, is pitched, and the way the runoff comes. And, you know, I guess it's just a, it's a concern, we're getting something from one side that's saying how harmonious and how much they want to work with us and all this stuff, but they haven't stopped by. They've stopped by a few people, and they've talked to a couple of people, but they haven't gone in and they haven't talked to everyone, and they haven't addressed some of the major concerns and existing conditions, which, you know, it is this, the soil does not drain. If you get surface water, it doesn't go anywhere. My backyard is a swamp, and they probably won't affect it, because I live far enough away. But there are five or six homes right in that proximity where they get standing water eight to ten inches deep on a moderate rainfall, because the road is dumping right into their front yards.
Yeah.
Just to respond to that, I mean, those are, again, some of the specific questions the town engineer had. We looked at each of the eleven abutting properties and looked at the watershed runoff to each of those to demonstrate that there was not an increase in either of those properties. Also, we looked at the storm drainage system of Hildecrest Drive. We had, within the confines of the application, looked at the specific discharge points from our property to the off-site location, demonstrated that there's a maintenance or a decrease throughout all the storm events.
Okay.
Steve Swanson on nineteen one, uh, just a question about how the development proceeds. Are the lots all cleared and then homes are built, or are they built one at a time? Are they?
Actually, I believe you addressed that, but why don't you re-answer that?
I don't know if that was fully addressed.
Sure, all of the roadway work will take place first, and all the grades associated with the roadway will be cleared and graded first. Again, that would start from the middle of the property, working towards the back. And as far as the, the, each of the individual lots, that's gonna be dictated by the pace of the home sales. Whether that, how quickly that happens would be based on the economy and based on the home sales.
So to that point, though, let's say those back two lots don't get sold right away, and that when would those rain gardens come in? Because I'm on the back slide, I'm John McDonald, fifteen Lotton Drive. When do those rain gardens go in that are gonna protect all that water washing off that hillside in my yard?
Excellent point, and I believe the town planner brought up that as well, that they would have to be installed as a, as a component, integral component of the roadway system.
Before even the house-
So before the roadway would be accepted, even if the lots are gonna be sold?
One of the concerns I'm hearing that sort of keeps getting missed, you're not gonna clear-cut the whole lot. You're gonna, are you gonna clear one lot at a time, or are you gonna clear-cut four lots? I mean, what's your procedure gonna be?
Well, this, this portion here up front is cleared, and all of this section here associated with the road and the road grades would have to be cleared for the road construction.
Right.
So of the three-and-a-half to four acres of total clearance, all of that will occur with, or, uh, let's, probably two-and-a-half acres of that will occur with the roadway construction. And then, as the homes are developed, the rest will be cleared, as they look at individual homes. The homes will have to be built within the buildable area, but as, as the home sites are actually selected, and the trees between the properties would then be decided upon for the buffers between each of the properties at the home stage.
And from what I heard you say earlier, if you're doing the road construction and you've taken off that first two feet, two-foot layer, whatever it is, clay or whatever, if there's a rain event during that period, you'll, they'll tend to get less water because it'll go straight down-
Right.
Well-
Through the soil, rather than being capped up tight, is that correct?
What we have is, there'll be, there'll be measures along Hildecrest Drive in terms of silt fencing, de-watering basins, and diversion rooms. So there will be no sheet flow runoff to Hildecrest, that'll be controlled. And all that top organic material is gonna be stockpiled on site, probably towards the rear of the parcel back, back in here, and save the topsoil material to be spread back afterwards. And by, this directs back in this direction, so you would be controlling the runoff that would be coming off-site during construction.
Good, thank you.
Ten years from now, when this rainwater detention system that's under the road fails, is full of silt, just stops working effectively, who's responsible for the maintenance of it?
Uh, this is all a proposed town road. All I can say is that I know the town engineer had similar concern, and he specifically looked at the pipes that are here, because this was a road that was built, I believe, in the late forties, early fifties, and he looked at the quality of the piping that was out there, and it was adequate. So it's a pipe drainage system that has been tested and has held up for a significant amount of time already.
How did he look at it?
Through the dash basin systems.
Did they camera it, they sculpt it?
I don't know that he camera the entire line, but he inspected it at each of the inlet locations.
Is, is it, can roads, I don't know, can roads be built pervious, like Fitzgerald parking lot is built impervious, or is that allowed or done in today's thing? So the water tends to go down more than runoff, or is that a stupid question?
No, it's not a stupid question, July asked, right? Could the town, could the town roads don't allow for that right now? They probably get too much use to withstand that. Whereas a parking lot would be, you know, occasional parking, occasional car going over. But I think as Andrew said, that they might consider that during driveways, depending upon what the subsurface conditions are. Pervious taping can work really well in the case of Fitzgerald parking lot, where the subsurface conditions can accept that water. They run into a subsurface condition where it's not gonna work well, there's no point in putting pervious taping in, it's just gonna go down to that hurricane layer you're running into. So each site would have to be looked at carefully. I think the low-impact development technique that they looked at most carefully here were the rain gardens and the stormwater detention underneath the main road. It's an unusual system that Rich required be done, because he was concerned, as we all were, with this runoff from the site.
Thank you.
You talked about the silt fencing along Hildecrest, so we have that along the back side of the property too?
The entire property.
By law, I believe it's gotta be the entire property, other than-
And that's showing the grading erosion control.
One more thing, in reading the plans with the, the five-year time limit and all that, is that correct that's on the plan?
I believe what you're talking about is the subdivision approval that we would give for the property.
It said something about five years, that means he has, that they have five years to develop it, or?
To complete the process.
Is this, the things that were said tonight about getting trees, is that part of the approval plan? Are we gonna have that in writing? If the plan changes, or what if they don't do this in five years, do we come back and do this again? Like, if they only sell three lots?
No.
Do they ask for an extension? I mean, or how, how does, you know, I mean, am I gonna have bulldozers next to my house for five to seven years, or? You know what I mean? So just some of those things of what happens if the economy isn't selling, and they're there longer, how does that work?
Let me see if I can answer the question, Hiram, if I'm incorrect, I know you'll jump in and save me. Our process as the planning commission is that we approve a subdivision, uh, plan. The applicant has five years to act and complete that plan. As part of our approval process, we have certain requirements that we put on the applicant. That is, the planting of the, uh, abutting, um, screening, putting in the pipes, maintaining all those, uh, pipes to the town specs for the drainage and everything else, until the town accepts those properties. Back to the other man's question about who maintains that pipe and everything, if it becomes a town road and the town accepts it, it's the town, our responsibility. Personally, I can only tell people, we are very fortunate, we have an exceptional town engineer. He's good. And he obviously beat up on these guys to, to get some things, between he and our town planner, to do that. But I believe I answered your question, ma'am, did I?
About what if it takes long, what?
Our, our-
They don't sell in five years, let's say they build three, three houses.
Our plan, they have to complete this process within five years. If they don't, they have to come back to us for our approval again, or request an extension, which we don't have to give.
Okay, all right.
Let me just, just be really clear about that, clarify that, I'm sure there's a couple of terms here and there. The subdivision approval is for five years, good for five years, actually, state statutes probably, it's probably a little bit longer now, but the, the fact is that the public improvement says the road, all the drainage, conservation easements and so on only can be put in place within that period of time. The private development of lots doesn't have to take place within five years. So in other words, a road can be put in, all the infrastructure will be put in, and technically, no development could take place for twenty years. Those lots are still, because they were approved by the commission, they're still with the group.
Okay.
I would just tell you by way of comparison, though, the last subdivision this commission approved was completely built out within nine months. I think Sand Hill is just about sold out in nine months. So if they're gonna be built, I'm sure the owner of the subdivision has no intention of doing this, you know, because he wants to waste all his money. So if Marcus Wright and the homes get built, I'm sure they'll be sold at the same time. But just to be perfectly honest with you, that's, that's how, how it goes.
But they have five years to complete the road.
Correct.
Not that that would take that long, you know, what I'm saying is they have five years to come in and do the road.
That's correct. And everything would be stable, the site would be completely stable, vegetated, planted, tree. That work would be done, whether any houses get built or not is up to them.
And just to, I guess, reinforce, is bond money the place, if it's not done, the town hasn't money to complete that, so it'll get done either way.
And just so the, the public is, is aware, we, within the past year, I believe, Hiram, we did our subdivision regulations, so that frankly, there are more teeth in there to deal with the bonding issue, to make sure that the applicant follows through on promises, and to hold their feet to the fire. Other questions, commission members? Applicant? Thank you. Hiram, a procedural question, what you get done assisting. At this point, um, among the options we have is to, to close the public hearing. I believe we've gotten all of the paperwork and documentation that you should have received, am I correct in that?
That's correct, we have everything, um, we have all the information, we have the engineer's report, everything from the wetland control charge, fire marshal report, we have everything.
The health district.
Correct. The commission has closed the hearing, um, any questions you may have for either myself or Louis Switzke or the town engineer or town attorney, could be answered at that point. But the public's comments have been voiced this evening, and if they had no further comments, then the commission can close the hearing this evening.
Okay. Before we-
And sixty-five days after you close the hearing, you make a decision.
Okay. Before we close the hearing, which may be our next step, or may not, depending on everyone's, is there anyone from the public that wishes to add some new information to the discussion points? I'll ask you not to go over things that have already been said. But I will also tell everybody, SCTV, by taping these meetings, I believe you can go on their website to get this information in the next few days and get a tape of this meeting. God knows why you'd want to hear, read those ten wherethes again, but God bless ya. So, are there any questions?
I have one quick question, Steve Basel, seventeen Laurel Drive. What's the potential size that these homes could be? I had missed that in the process, are they gonna be three thousand, six thousand? I know we said they could be a one-story-
Three thousand, thirty-two hundred.
That's the biggest they could be?
Well, they could be bigger, if we want the bigger one, still has to go with the buildable lot.
Okay, so they could be five, there's a big difference-
The market is a little better, but not-
Looking across the street in my elderly neighbors, it couldn't be here, there's a big difference between looking at a thirty-two hundred square foot house, a six thousand square foot house, that's about forty feet from the property.
We wanna sell them, so it's about thirty-two hundred.
Okay, any other questions? Last chance. Okay, uh, commission members. Uh, would you like to close the public hearing? I believe it's appropriate for us to do that, but we can have some discussion. Actually, we probably should close it prior to having our discussion. I think that would be more appropriate, so I'd look for a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
Mark, second, discussion on that issue? All in favor of closing the public hearing for forty-six Hildecrest, the application for forty-six Hildecrest Drive? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Hearing's closed. Okay, discussion, gentlemen.
I suggest that, um, we have a little conference with Rich, find out his true feelings on all this. I have a few concerns on as far as the drainage is concerned. And a few of the members still need to do a walk-through-
Yeah.
To make an informed opinion. But all things considered, they seem to fit the criteria. So it's, it's really a drainage problem, and the impact that they're gonna have on other people's properties is my biggest concern.
Yeah.
And I can get those questions answered by Rich. They seem to have gone through due diligence and mitigated the circumstances that I'm concerned about, but I just want to get a, a reaffirming opinion from Rich-
Yeah.
To some of my questions.
Well, probably if we'd followed our agenda and not amended it, we'd have Rich here, but-
Well, he, he made, you know, what, what probably would be a good idea is if we, I give these questions, and then he can show up at the next meeting if you'd like, we can do that.
I, I think that would be a great idea.
The other two members who have a walk-
We'll give them a chance to walk.
Let me know when you're gonna do it. Just would caution you that don't have any, any substantive discussions at all with the owner or the applicant when you're walking the property, just boundaries and stuff are fine, don't ask anymore, 'cause now the hearing's closed, so that you got what you got.
Okay. And also, we should not be having conversations with any of the public, that's the ex parte discussions, and it's inappropriate.
Hiram, was the, um, public comment open before we took our, our walk? Because we were allowed to ask questions of the builder and developer at that point.
The hearing, the hearing was open at that point.
Yeah.
It was opened as of the last meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we opened it and then did not take any-
It stayed open, and so we were allowed to have a discussion.
And I think that's, and I think that's a good way to do it, frankly, because that gives you a little bit of latitude, as long as the, the walk was discussed, and Howard was there as well, so he kept a, you know, kind of track of things.
Yeah, to the extent he could. Did a very good job. And I think that's a very good point, getting Rich in here, I would feel better having some of my questions answered by Rich.
I, I agree with that, I'd like to hear a little bit more from Rich on the drainage issue, because it's, it's definitely something that's of concern in that whole area, living in the town for a long time. in the town for a long time, I know it's a wet area, if there's, if this isn't gonna add to it, we need to hear that, if this is, and if there is an ongoing problem that this isn't going to exacerbate, you know, we need to hear that from Rich in a little more detail than the memo.
I agree. Okay, then we will, we've closed the hearing, we're gonna not take any vote at this meeting, and we will bring it up again at our next meeting in two weeks.
I have a question of Hiram, who do I contact to get a walk-through?
Just let me know, if you wanna go, and I'll contact the applicant, just let me know what you want to do. If you want to get it as soon as you can.
Sunday, three seconds.
We don't need to know until this is done.
Yeah. Okay.
Did Tina walk?
No, no, it's, in fact, for our next meeting, I would really like the six of us to be there.
I'm four thousand miles away at the next meeting, so Tina should definitely walk.
Excuse me? Going somewhere warm again, Ferg?
Well, I don't have any rules at all.
Yeah, our next meeting, we need it, if Ferg's not gonna be here, we need all five of us.
If Bill's gonna be here, for sure, he walks.
Bill's away at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, too?
Yeah. And Tina's not gonna be available.
Okay.
So.
This is the group.
Yeah.
This is it.
This is, it's us guys.
Ferg, cancel your plans.
Okay, moving along with our agenda.
Thank you all.
Thank the public, thank you very much, folks. Discussion items, marketing study, Hiram, why don't we give everybody a moment to get out of here? Okay, Hiram.
Sure, the marketing study consultant was, has been selected, and we had our first meeting with the marketing consultant last week, and they decided to set up stakeholder meetings with all the business groups in town, and they'll be meeting with stakeholders from the Trimmer, from Simmsbury Main Street, from the business owners and the business property owners, as well as the developers in town, I'm trying to get that set up for May ninth, so if that, you can pencil that in, if we're able to do that, we've reserved the Masonic Hall just north of the center here for that meeting, not sure the exact time or the agenda yet, I'm trying to look that out the next day or so, but by May ninth, we'll have the marketing consultant here, first, they're gonna talk about the general whole marketing concept, what's going on with this whole study, then it'll break down into groups, business owners and property owners and different groups and so on, and try to get specific information from people to draw on, or what they think is the, what are the issues with regarding the marketing of town, so I think it's gonna be an interesting discussion, and hopefully you can attend, if you get a chance to.
Yeah, that'd be great if you could let us know, that'd be wonderful. Village District Regulation.
We also met with the consultants doing the Village District Regulation work, initially we thought we were gonna be able to do two or three different village districts, but due to the funding level that we had and the level of detail that we would like to come out of this study, we really asked them to focus on just one area right now. When we did the Route Ten Quarter Study, you may recall that there was a lot of interest in the Wheaton area, and just as the road comes over the bridge there, and then just going north up toward Mitchell's and so on, and so the area that we've asked them to focus on is from one eighty-five north of Powder Forest Drive, right in that area, and to develop, to build District Regulation, very much like the Town Center Form-Based Code with some graphics, some information about how that area could develop in the future, what it could look like, with connections to all the other buildings that we would like to keep in that area, buildings that we might not like to keep in that area and so on, so I think that's gonna be an interesting study, we're also gonna set up a meeting in the near future, probably in early May as well, with stakeholders in that area, then we'll specifically talk about property owners in that area, bringing them in to say, what would you like to see happen on your property, so we involve the people that are directly involved with that property, that own that property, so that has a timeframe of about the same, finishing that up at the end of June, so we're gonna have a little prayer and a prayer as well, so May and June are gonna be busy months for both of those.
Yeah, and third item is the Hartford Land Use Study.
Yeah, this is really a big item, in that Hartford, as I mentioned before, has sort of graciously agreed to pay for the bulk of this sort of charrette study of what we could do with that hundred and seventy-two acres of their property, as they leave town, obviously, they could just simply turn it over to a realtor and say, you know, sell it to another business, quote, one six hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you, thank you.